Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than ninety years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, (548) 0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Internet services provided by Cape.com Incorporated. Established in 1994, Cape.com is the only locally owned and operated internet service provider on Cape Cod. Our specialties include e-commerce applications and design, wide-area networking services, and high-speed DSL internet access throughout eastern Massachusetts. Cape.com continues to lead the way with cutting-edge applications, superior networking services, and quality customer support. For more information, visit us at www.cape.com, or call us at (539) 9500.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, September 9, 2013 meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. The board is returning from executive session. I invite you to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some procedural announcements before we begin. If you have a cell phone or some other device that could spontaneously make noise, we ask that you silence it or turn it off for the duration of your stay with us. If you would like to participate this evening, there will be opportunities for public comment. Please wait to be recognized by the chair. When you are recognized, please come to the podium, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are; that doesn't mean that our recording secretary or the general public does. And we ask that you address all comments through the chair and adhere to our speaker's policy, a copy of which is at the lectern. Please refrain from any side conversations here in the room, or immediately outside the room, because it can distract the proceedings. If you choose to leave early, before we conclude our business, remember that we still have business to conduct, and we ask that you leave quietly. You may choose to record the meeting, if you would like to do so using audio, that is permitted. We simply only, we simply ask that you identify yourself for the record. If you choose to record via video, you will need to request permission from the board. Does anyone here wish to record the board this evening via audio or video? Come to the lectern, please.
I'm John Carlton Floss, and I would request to be able to record using video.
Any objections from the board? Granted.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to our announcements and proclamations. Mr. Jones.
Proclamation. Whereas suicide is the tenth-leading cause of all deaths in the United States, and the third-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of fifteen to twenty-four, whereas the United States one person completes suicide every fourteen minutes. Whereas it is estimated that 4.73 million people in the United States are survivors of suicide loss. Whereas suicide is a community problem, and thus, there must be a community response through various initiatives to reduce suicidal behaviors. Whereas Cape Cod's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher than the state of Massachusetts. Whereas the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition, and the Cape and Island Youth Suicide Prevention Coalition... Prevention Project are dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through education, awareness, and action. Urge that we, as a community, 1. recognize suicide as a national, state, and town public health problem, and declare suicide prevention to be a Cape Cod/Island priority. 2. Acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or community. 3. Encourage local initiatives based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention that will, A. develop and implement strategies to reduce the stigma associated with being a consumer of mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services. B. Develop and implement community-based suicide prevention programs and suicide bereavement support services. C. Implement training for the recognition of at-risk behavior and for the delivery of the effective treatment. D. Increase access to and community linkages with mental health and substance abuse in the entertainment and news media. Whereas a great many suicides are preventable, therefore, it be resolved that we, Brent Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, and Rebecca Moffett do hereby designate September 2013, which overlaps World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10, as National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Falmouth, Massachusetts.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Another announcement for everyone's edification, we do have on the agenda this evening, wind turbine mitigation alternatives. And as promised, the board will be having public comment, but we'll be doing this next week in order to give everyone the opportunity to see the documents and the information that the board has before us this evening. We'll be having that public comment section next week. So if you'd like to stay and listen to what the board has to say, you're certainly welcome to. But public comment regarding the wind turbine options will be next week. Any other announcements from the board or the Town Engineer's Office?
I don't have an announcement, but, Mr. Chairman, I thought that we were going to take, have the whole discussion next week on the wind turbine, that we were not going to have the discussion tonight, but have it next week along with the public comment. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't know.
Well, we'll certainly have the board's discussion and decision next week after we have the public comment, but it is on the agenda, so if there's any additional discussion that the board would like to have, that option still remains. All right. So with that, the next item on our agenda, accept a donation from Falmouth Road Race in the amount of $80,000 for the All Purpose Community Field.
Karen Bissonette and Mike Duffney, representing the All Purpose Community Field Committee, which is now an ad hoc advisory committee of the school committee. And we're just here to ask you to accept an $80,000 gift from the Falmouth Road Race so that we can have a contract signed for the design and engineering portion of the project and so we can get moving on it.
Just so the board understands, I had asked about why the board would be having any participation in this process, because obviously, the field would be on school property, which would fall under the school committee's jurisdiction. But apparently, according to state law, only the Board of Selectmen can establish a donation account. Therefore, we would have to accept the donation, and then it would be dispersed accordingly.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that maybe the motion be to accept the donation and create the donation account, so that, is that really what you're asking?
Please, because there will be other donations.
So I would make that motion, that we very happily accept the donation and thank the road race and all of, and those of you who are working so hard in the fields. Congratulations.
I think the generosity of the Falmouth Road Race is awesome. I do want to suggest one thing to the board, and that, that would be that we establish a donation account. Typically, the board is the one that signs off on what the donations are made of, made from, on the donation accounts. Would be a little remissed and probably wouldn't be following up the board's fiduciary responsibility if we didn't make sure that someone from the board was involved in those kind of decision-making processes, like a liaison, as we ended up doing with the school building project, as the project moved forward to fruition. It provides an opportunity in this community for all segments of the community to participate in the decision process, because ultimately, if there are any funds that would be needed before town meeting or the voters, those funds would either be recommended from the Board of Selectmen or put forward in an article from the Board of Selectmen. I don't want to see this board jump into this process halfway down the road. If we're going to accept and set up a donation account, I think that we need to set a couple of parameters on the donation account. Number one is that dispersments from the donation account be done like any other dispersment from any other donation account that I'm aware of, that it has to be a vote of the Board of Selectmen to disperse that money. So that would be the one, one scenario, and I would hope that this board would have some kind of representation at the table as this process moves forward. And that could be something separate, but I'm just putting that part on, on the scenario. But in, in Mrs. Flynn and your, your recommendation and your motion, I would hope that the motion would include that any dispersments, like any other donation account dispersments, would come before the Board of Selectmen, because I don't believe the school committee has that power to disperse out of the donation account.
If I may, absolutely. Well, I certainly understand what you're saying, and what I'd like to suggest is that we, since clearly we were advised to simply vote to set up the account, that we ask Town Council to review this, because it's a little different scenario than a school building committee, in a sense. And maybe he can give a, set up the parameters for how the money is deposited and how it gets dispersed and what the role of the Selectmen are. We know that we have to approve dispersments from donation accounts. That's a requirement of state law. But whether we have to actually participate in the deliberations, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm okay with that, but sometimes it helps to have council clarify that for us.
Well, you just summed up what I, the main purpose of what I wanted to say. And what I wanted to say was that dispersments still have to come back to the Board of Selectmen for a vote to disperse out of any donation account. So if you make that as-
And then, so my motion would be to, that I move to set up the donation account and request Town Council advise us and on the, we know that we have to approve the donations from the account, and have, advise us on the, the role of Selectmen in the deliberations of the expenditures. How would that be? That would be my motion.
So as long as, as long as we approve the donations, I think, all right.
Okay. So we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second.
Could I just say, did you understand it, that that was the way, that it would come to the Selectmen and the Selectmen would be part of the, of knowing how the dispersments went? You understand that that's the way your procedure works?
We thought that the procedure would be that the school would then disperse it. Mike Ward is on this committee now, as well as our Town Engineer and DPW. And so we thought when we had met that maybe it would be a line item, separate line item coming from the school. But however you would like, because there'll be more, and we're using Together We Can as the nonprofit, so if an individual gives, they will be giving through Together We Can. But since the road race is also a nonprofit, we don't have to run it through Together We Can.
And my understanding is that because it's a gift that the town, that you all have to accept it on behalf of the town, that it can't be accepted through the school committee, it has to be accepted through the Selectmen. So that's why we took the next step.
Yeah, I think this is a little more complex, probably, and, and this may not be considered a donation account. Maybe we accept a donation and we create an account, but whether the expenditures of it are considered expenditures from a donation account, that's where I think we need to get Town Council involved.
Mr. Duffey's-
And our finance director, who knows more about the finance laws than I do. So that would be my motion, that we accept the donation, create a, create the account, and then ask Council to advise on the appropriate mode of distribution of funds from the account. Which includes-
That's not the, the motion I accepted. I seconded.
All right. Well, then, why don't you amend my motion?
No, well, I-
The original motion.
I thought you changed it, that's all, that we would just see the dispersments out of the donation account, that we would vote on the dispersments.
Yes.
There's a possibility that, that this money could get gobbled up in, in the world, and we have a fiduciary responsibility. I'm not saying that committee, in other words, if all the money is not used, then it could be used for other things, and typically, in donation accounts, that's, it comes back before the Board of Selectmen. And maybe Jennifer, I mean, everything, you can advise or disclaim, but I would be most comfortable with that.
My expectation is that this $80,000 is going to go to a donation account and be expended fairly quickly-
Yes.
For the purposes of, and so it's going to become-
Yes.
Not money that we're going to be five years from now.
It's designated for that purpose.
And any other monies that they receive can go to Together We Can.
But it, with, Mr. Chairman, if I can, it's my understanding is that the road race is hoping to pledge additional funds for this. So we're establishing a donation account that is going to be something that moves forward. This isn't a one-time deal. This is something that is going to move forward, so in the checks and balances procedure, that's all I'm saying, is that we need to set up a policy of how those dispersments would get, get, get dispersed out of the donation account.
Okay, well, Ms. Flynn has presented a motion that would include advice from Town Council as to how we would proceed with this process. Anyone want to second that motion?
I will.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is that sufficient?
I, I would like us to be able to have, like every other donation account in this community, as part of the motion, that it comes back to the board for approval of the donations.
I think that is required by law.
That's included.
So whether it's part of the motion or not, it would by default.
Okay. All right.
If this follows an established donation account as, as prescribed in the, in the laws, then that's the way it would work, that only Selectmen can vote to expend from a donation account. Jennifer has something she could say.
Jennifer Petit, Finance Director, I don't mean to confuse the issue, but I believe under Mass. General Law, you can have the school committee and the Board of Selectmen accept a donation, and I was under the impression that we're having both because it is town-owned property that we will be doing construction on. I will have a discussion with Town Council because I think the key here is who's signing the contract. And who's signing the contract, really, when you disperse the funds, it's the person overseeing the contract and managing the contract, because you want to make sure you're paying what you're managing. And I believe Mike Ward has been designated as managing that contract through the school committee, for the school committee and the superintendent. But let me have a conversation with Town Council regarding, just to clarify, to make sure, under Mass. General Law, that was my understanding, but it might be a little bit more restrictive, and the Board of Selectmen might have to vote as well, but I can clarify that.
I, I think, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, to have a, a policy specific for this fund makes good sense. Right now, the board's policy is every expense from a donation account, $500 or over is required to come to this board. In this case, you don't want to see every $500 expense, because you're going to have multiple large bills for a, a construction, bid documents that are being prepared. So you, we may want to establish some very specific thresholds, you know, at 25% or whatever the design is, progression is, that you'd have an approval on that, and that that's built into the contract, so that the contractor knows what to expect in terms of payments, that being before the board could have a, an impact on the schedule of payment. So I, I think that the suggestion is a good one, and working with the finance director, I think we can propose something that would be appropriate for the board and acceptable.
And just one final comment. We're really accepting a donation and establishing an account. It may not be a donation account. It may be another type of account, because it may not meet the criteria of a, to donation account in terms of, of the way, for the purpose for which the funds have been donated. As Jennifer said, if this is for expending, to making expenditures related to a contract, that's entirely different in a certain sense. Although, from our donation accounts, some of those accounts do pay for contracted services, like in the beach department or something like that. So I think the best decision is to get Council to advise us on how to do this. I mean, that's, that was the motion, and that was the second, so now we need to-
That was a motion and a second. Were we all set then?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? There you go. Unanimous.
It's still a great thing.
Whoever said it wasn't.
No, I know you didn't.
All right. Next item on our-
If you want to flip a coin, who's going to be in?
Next item, item, eh, next item on our agenda, if I can get the words out, we have a presentation of a petition to support the preserve of the Nimrod. Do you need the lights dimmed a little?
Yeah, eventually, please, as you would. My name is George Hampson, and I'm from North Falmouth, and presently, I'm the president of Save the Nimrod. And the way I got that honor is I went to Alaska, and when I came home, I was president of Save the Nimrod. It works that way. So thank you for having us. I'd like to introduce my colleague.
I'm Caleb Rostrand, 43, Tupans Road.
And he does all the work. He's going to just show a few photos, so you'll understand about what we're working with. First of all, I'd like to recognize the Selectmen, because you folks were instrumental in saving Highfield Hall. A lot of people don't realize this, but you started it. And we realized without their involvement, Highfield Hall would never have been what it is today, which is absolutely spectacular. Today was a very important day for us. We met with Warren Dalton. Warren Dalton is going to be the owner of this property. And it's a good thing we did, because we got along very well. And I was presently surprised to hear, which really took the flutters out of my stomach, which have been there for about a week, in that there is no plans to destroy any of the structures that are the important ones, the historic structures. That is green, it's green color. And that's the Bourne, or the Hatch House, the Hatch House that was named before. And then, the other one is the Lewis House, the ones both in green. So I hope you can share that with me, because I was just devastated for the whole week thinking about this. One thing that we are concerned about is the lack of public access, and we'll talk about that later. And our organization is going to stay in existence. We are not going to disband, and we hope to resolve some of those issues. Mr. Dalton has ruled out the use of the buildings as a restaurant or a tavern, enacting restaurant or the tavern. And the general public regarding these developments will be hearing more about this as we go on in the future. We remain committed to helping preserve the Nimrod at a historic landmark, landmark of Falmouth, involvement of world, of the War of 1812. And that's why it's so important to us. And what I'm going to ask for you, after you get through, if you would please, Caleb been presenting these, is I'm going to ask the Selectmen if you would kindly consider your vote as supporting our petition, which is essentially your vote to sanction the preservation of these properties. If you would, please.
Sir? Very simply, this is an overhead satellite view courtesy of Google Maps, and this is the Bourne Hatch House. It was owned by Ichabod Hatch during the attack in 1814. Took the cannonball in the wall. This is the Captain Nathaniel Lewis House, which, these two houses were moved to this site in the 1920s, joined at this area right here. The areas in green are the areas that we feel are historically significant and that we are really trying to save. All of the other areas in yellow that include, it looks like a screen dining area and a lot of other areas, an apartment off the top of the, off the back of the Lewis House, we feel are not historically significant. They were modern era construction, possibly from the 1940s to the 1950s, and they've fallen under serious disrepair and can, as we said at the bottom of the slide, we feel that they could be demolished. We were just really trying to save those two in green right there.
That being said, I have a petition, and the signatures on this petition were collected in a very short period of time. And there's approximately- And there's approximately a hundred and seventy of these signatures. And if I could read the petition to you, and then I'll pass this out to you, so you can either keep this or return it to us, it's up to your choice. With the approach of the two-hundredth anniversary of the British bombardment of Falmouth on January the twenty-eighth, eighteen fourteen, the undersigned citizens of Falmouth asked the board of selectmen to support preservation of the Bourne Hatch House and the Captain Nathaniel Lewis House as a historic asset that symbolizes Falmouth's courageous resistance to British forces during the War of eighteen twelve. Over there. And it was more than just the Hatch House. There was a lot of cannonballs flying around at that time, which we still are finding out in the ocean, by the way. So that's our petition, and I would respectfully ask the selectmen to support us on this. Because without it, it's a dent in our progress, and I would appreciate very much if you would do that.
Questions from the board?
Here's our signatures, and then that's the...
We'll add this to the record.
I guess I have a question, George. Do you have a plan going forward? You said you had a meeting with Warren Dalton today.
Yes.
And do you have a plan going forward of how you might be able to utilize the homes or move them or whatever?
Well, Mr. Dalton has a plan that he has given us, and what we're trying to do is negotiate with him. And I feel very strongly, and he doesn't know about this, he's probably hearing it now for the first time, but I feel very strongly, since this is part of our history, that there should be some allowance, that the public could visit every once in a while. I mean, the oceanographic, we open up to the public, you know? So it would be nice if somehow that people could come and say, this is it, this is the place, even if it's a distance from that. But it's part of the public's property in a way, if you think about it. You know, I've always told you about my house, I pay the taxes, but I don't own it. You know, it's owned by the town because that's what I'm preserving it for. So anyway, that said, your answer to your question is, no, we do not have concrete plans of what we're going to do. We're going to share this, and that's why we're going to stay together as a committee to go forward and to answer some of these questions. Because you can't do it all in just a single meeting. But I want to tell you, the meeting with Warren Dalton today, to me, I didn't have to take any of that pink stuff. I mean, my stomach was nice and cool after I got through with it.
I know what that is.
You know how it is. So anyway, that's, yes.
Oh, I just have another question. But you are continuing to fundraise?
Well, we will, yes. I mean, we're not to discourage that.
No.
There's a good possibility that we might contribute to some of the repairs to Warren so that he can do added repairs, as we would hope. So we're not going to disband and we're not going to discourage monies that people would give us.
And so what you're asking us to do is support you and your resolve to save these two homes for, because of their historic value and their history in the community.
Yeah. A lot of times, people equate this with houses in town that are being taken over and destroyed. We're hoping to help with that also. That's another issue we're going to be doing. However, this is way beyond that. You know, this is not just Falmouth. It's all of New England, what happened here. And that discouraged the British from further attacks, you know? I mean, that was a milestone.
It was.
And it happened here in Falmouth, it's kind of neat. So that's it.
I'd be very comfortable making a motion to show the support of the selectmen for this group's efforts to preserve the Hatch House and the Lewis House as assets of the town.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I think that the group has done an excellent job, but I don't think it's appropriate that the board get involved with the negotiations that this group has done. There was another committee that made a decision, are we going to bring forward groups for every house in this community that folks want to save? I don't think it's the board's role to be involved in it. I know personally I support it, but as a board, I don't think it's an issue that we need to chime in on because there's already some legs to this. Mr. Hampson, I bumped into him today, and you could see he was far from have any angst. He was very happy, as a matter of fact, after his meeting. So I take my hat off to them, but I don't think this is an issue that the board of selectmen should be involved in at this point. That's my personal thought.
Well, you know, I understand, Kevin, what you're saying, but, you know, I started with the efforts to preserve Highfield in nineteen eighty-eight, and it took till almost two thousand to have that really come about. So it does take a long time, and I think we came to the board at that time, I wasn't on the board in the eighties, goodness, and asked, what you're really asking us is to support your efforts.
That's correct.
We're not asking you to contribute town funds. We're just saying, you know, these are two, these are two properties that have great historic value to this community, and you want to work together with people who also want, believe in that as well, and you want us to support your efforts. So I think that's what they're really asking for, and I think that's okay. I don't think that we're being asked to do anything beyond that yet.
I don't have a problem with supporting the efforts of negotiating and working with the developer, and that is really what's happened here. But to stop a developer because someone wants to save a house that's on someone else's...
That's not what my motion was. My motion was to support the efforts that this group was forward to...
I would never ask for that.
To have this happen.
Okay.
You know me better than that. I would never ask for that.
Okay.
So have a motion and a second. Any public comment? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposition?
All abstained.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Trainer had also approached the board, although...
My name is Sandy Trainer. I retired to Falmouth in two thousand and six. In these last seven years, I've been awestruck by the strong sense of community activism that exists here in Falmouth. And this activism runs the gamut, from the folks who, regardless of the weather conditions, are there at the common, nearby the common, demonstrating for peace every Saturday, to the Fourth of July celebration that goes on here in Falmouth, to the road race that we just heard about that happens here in August, to the annual Christmas parade, this year being the fiftieth annual Christmas parade. Such community spirit, such community activism. So it takes, these are examples of citizens giving themselves to make Falmouth a better place. These petitions I deliver you tonight are merely a vehicle or a voice of folks concerned and we're delivering them to you, the selectmen, as our town leaders, citizen activism. The petition reads, "We, the undersigned residents of the community, request the town of Falmouth overturn the Falmouth Historic Commission's vote to issue a demolition waiver that allows the destruction of this piece of Falmouth history." The issue, the demolition delay bylaw gives the town the time needed to thoughtfully consider if a building is important to preserve. The Historic Commission is the town's committee, charged to seek community input, talk to the historians, make a thoughtful determination as to if a building should be saved as part of Falmouth's heritage. This did not happen with the property known as the Nimrod. When the Historic Commission waived the demolition delay bylaw, it gave up the very protection the bylaw was designated and designed to ensure. Because the Falmouth Historical Commission works for you, and you are the selectmen, work for us, it is for this reason I come before you with this petition. The demolition delay bylaw is the only tool the town has to protect and preserve our heritage. It is to be used for the common good, not be waived. Thank you for allowing me to present this petition. We have two hundred and thirty-two signatures that request this selectmen to reconsider the vote for the Historic Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trainer. We'll add it to the file. I would note that the board is not in a position to overturn what is a legally binding decision made by a legally appointed committee of the town. So while we appreciate your concern and the petition, I can honestly tell you that we're probably not going to take any action on this, so, thank you. All right, and with that, we have a presentation by Town Planner Brian Curry. This is in relation to the floodplain mapping changes. Also, I would like to ask the board, Mr. Curry also is going to be doing a presentation for the LIP application, which falls a couple of items down on the agenda, and given the fact that he's here now, unless there's any objection from the board, I'm going to pull that agenda item up and we'll just dispense with both of them simultaneously. If that's all right with the board? All right, Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your record. My name is Brian Curry, I'm the town planner, and I'm here tonight on a very timely topic. I have a short presentation for the board as a PowerPoint presentation. It mirrors some of the very common questions that we in the planning office and the building department and the engineering division have been receiving. Joyce White tells me in the first two weeks of August, she had over fifty phone calls or inquiries on this topic. So the presentation mirrors those questions, so it seems fairly elementary because it's going to begin with the what are we talking about, and what is going on, and who is doing what, and where we are in the process.
That little window there?
Yeah.
Just hit the red X. What are you talking about?
The slide.
The slide in the back? Should hit escape.
Escape.
There you go.
Okay, so the topic tonight is, the words to take home are preliminary, and the three words are flood insurance study, flood hazard determinations, and the flood insurance rate maps for Barnstable County. Those are the three terms I asked the board and the public to pay attention to. So what is a flood insurance study? The study itself is essentially a narrative report.
Except what does firm mean in that statement?
We're getting there. We're going to talk about what are we talking about, who's doing it, where are we in the process? So we'll get to that, thank you. But the three things go together, and the flood insurance study is essentially a narrative report of the community's flood hazards, the determinations. And it looks something like this. It passes the heft test, and it essentially has all the data and all the methodologies. If you wanted to look through this, you could determine what are the flood hazard determinations for my property. I don't care to do that, and that's why we have flood insurance rate maps. And the flood insurance rate maps are essentially, that map that illustrates the extent of these flood hazards, essentially what are risk zones. And these risk zones, we have to pay attention to, especially here in Falmouth, are known as V zones for velocity zones, and A zones for inundation zones. The E essentially stands for, we know what that elevation is. And what a velocity zone is, is that zone that is subject to wave action. The example is Surf Drive when the colleges during Hurricane Bob wound up on the other side of Salt Pond. That's because they were in a velocity zone. An A zone is where you get inundations. You have essentially a one percent chance in any given year of reaching what's known as, I'll explain this some more, the base flood elevation. It's not the one-hundred-year storm, it's a one percent chance of reaching a certain elevation. Here in Town Hall, it's elevation nine. That's our base flood elevation, it's about to the ceiling of the basement. So why are these, why is this all important to us? These risk zones, the flood insurance study, those determinations that are in it in these maps, these documents determine floodplain regulations, CONCON regulations, zoning determinations, building code. And very importantly, it determines who must buy flood insurance. The one percent chance of a base flood elevation means that over a term of a typical mortgage, you have a one in four chance of encountering that event, whilst underwriters find that to be too large of a collateral risk. Who is developing these studies in Falmouth? We're not doing that. It's being performed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, as part of the National Flood Insurance Program. Now, we've been a part of the National Flood Insurance Program here in Falmouth since nineteen eighty-two. Very simply, what that means is, Town of Falmouth, if you regulate development in these flood hazard areas in a certain way, we will provide, we being the federal government, we will provide you with flood insurance. And it's standardized flood insurance and flood zones throughout the nation. George just left, but the Town of Falmouth, actually in nineteen seventy-five, the Town of Falmouth Planning Board asked, in a meeting, they granted fifty thousand dollars for a topographic study of the town to develop their own flood zones. And they adopted, but we eventually went with the National Flood Insurance Program back in nineteen eighty-two. So this is a composite of these panels. The panels actually look like this. There are twenty-two of them. I don't care to look through them, they're not very friendly, but we'll get to that in a moment. So Bob Shea and our GIS department put together this composite of all twenty-two of those panels showing in coral, pink, those velocity zones, good choice, color. In the yellow areas are those A zones or the inundation zones. Essentially, eight thousand parcels in townwide are either in one of those zones, two thousand in your velocity zone, and about six thousand in your inundation zones, according to these maps. That's over a third of all the parcels townwide. So it's something we feel is very important to the town and that we need to be paying attention. The reason we do this composite is, we actually have this electronically also through Mass GIS, is we can zoom in anywhere, to any part of the town, and take a peek at just exactly where you are. So you can see right here, I love technology.
That's me.
Is it you? Okay. One more forward. I'm going to give you this, and I'm going to use the old-fashioned methods. You can see...
Mr. Curry, if you could grab the microphone, just so the folks at home can hear you. Thank you.
So just for some examples, here's the Heights Ball Field, that's the Boston Beer Company, British Beer Company, that's the casino. They're in the coral, the pink, they're in velocity zones. If you look over here to your left, that's the Harbor Masters and the Flying Bridge and Falmouth Marine. You can see that they are in the yellow or in the inundation... You can see that they are in the yellow, or in the inundation zones, the A zones. Clam Shack, Mr. TG, you can see are in velocity zones. So we can actually home in on, I'd rather use this tool than the paper maps, but they're not official. So we're getting a question, why are these maps being updated? Well, first, well, we have a larger storm history. Most of these maps are put together in the early 80s. Since then, we've had Hurricane Gloria. My son was a year old, it was a great day. One-year birthday party is canceled. We've had Hurricane Bob, we've had a bunch of no-name storms. And we have better technology. Those are some of the technical reasons. But also, in 2012, Congress passed the Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012. You may have heard about this. It's going to have some very long-range and long-term changes to the National Flood Insurance Program, both with regards to federal subsidies, who gets flood insurance, and how they will rate those policies, and will be rating them now on full actuarial risk. And it's essentially a reaction to some of the cost avoidance and cost recovery methods, issues that Congress has passed. So we have to really pay attention to this. You'll notice even in Bill of the Deer Plains, even back aside, even though areas around Gerloff Road and Lowry Road and Swing Lane, you may think we're fairly far from the shore, but according to these federal maps, you are in an inundation zone, and if you have federally insured mortgage, or if you have other building issues, you may fall to some insurance and some regulatory matters, even if you are somewhat far afield from the actual shoreline. So we need to pay attention to all this. People are asking also, where can I see these flood insurance rate maps? These paper copies are available in the building department here in Town Hall. They are available at the engineering office on Gifford Street. If you really want to, you can go into Boston and see them at FEMA Region 1, but we have them here. We also have our interactive map on the GIS, but it's not official. We'll be giving a public presentation, Esther Gore, Ladio Gore, your building commissioner, and Bob Shea, the GIS coordinator, will give a public presentation Thursday, September 19th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. here in the old water department. So if people want to come in and actually take a look at those firm maps, and they are very user-friendly, we'll have an opportunity to at least point, you're here, and we think you're in this zone, and we'll do that as a, as a public service. So where, where are we in the process? We are at that green line. We actually started this process, we being FEMA, the state, and localities, back around 2010, with some discovery, with FEMA, down in Chatham, and mid-Cape. And essentially, for the last three years, they've been going through their engineering studies, and their hazard mapping, and the data development that led to the issuance May 3rd of these preliminary firm FIS. It came as a form of a letter to the Board of Selectment Chairman, Mr. Murphy. They essentially put the town on notice that they're coming out. FEMA then scheduled a coordination meeting with us for town officials in Barnstable, and again down in Chatham. Ladio and I went together with Bob Shea, the Director of Public Works, Mr. Jack, and the town engineer, Peter, all went to find out just exactly what was going on, and what the process would be. You get briefed by the national coordinators about what was going to happen, we thought at least. On July 5th, FEMA made cause to be published in the Federal Register those flood hazard determinations, the data. And that starts the clock going with regards to certain federal requirements. They also, on July 19th, caused to be published a notice in the Falmouth Enterprise that the appeal period, if you're going to appeal their determinations, started, started up on July 19th, which means your appeals, I'll explain this a bit more, we're going to say your appeals have, are due October 15th, believe it or not, here in the Town Hall. Get more into that later. And then, after those appeal period is over, FEMA has told us that they will issue what's known as a letter of final determination. Sounds ominous, but it essentially means that all the talk will stop, and the maps will be issued. And then the towns have six months to decide whether they will adopt them for the purposes of being, participating in the National Flood Insurance Program. You'll see that we have an April town meeting, obviously in 2014, where we will probably take that topic up. So folks are asking us, if I disagree, if I disagree with my flood hazard determination, how do I file an appeal? This is where there's been some confusion. Technically, you could do it on your own, but we don't advise it. You have to show FEMA scientific proof, or engineering proof, that either their maps are wrong, or your building or land is elevated a little higher. So you essentially have to hire someone with that expertise. That information is in the Code of Federal Regulations. We put that information requirements online here in the Town Board page, and give a link to the Code of Federal Regulations. It's not easy, but it's doable. You can actually do it. We have one filed already. I know others are coming in. It's especially true if your building was now designated to be in a velocity zone where it wasn't before, because it really implicates a lot of insurance and regulatory matters. We will offer that you need to get your appeal into Town Hall here, because Town Hall is going to be the receiving point. FEMA won't even talk to the engineers. They're only going to talk to the town. And the appeals have to be actually delivered here in Town Hall, and I'm telling folks, no later than October 15th of this year. Our role under the federal regulations is we compile them with or without comment, and we ship them up to FEMA Region 1 in Boston. FEMA Region 1 in Boston has to have the appeal by February, by October 19th in their hands. If someone comes in from the public, October 19th at 3:30 in the afternoon, we'll put it in the mail for you, but as I say, it's probably not going to be received, you're probably going to have to drive it in. So we're going to try to get everything in here early, get it done, and get it out the door. Otherwise, we'll have unhappy people on the Southeast Expressway, and nobody wants that. Can I still file some sort of appeal after this October 15th deadline? The good news is, yes, you can. The process is known as a letter of map change, revision, or amendment. Change, revision, or amendment is a function of how big the change is. If it's a big area, it's a change. If it's a medium area, it's a revision. If it's a small area, it's an amendment. That's how the feds think. I'm sorry. I don't like this. Most single homeowners, it's a letter of map amendment, or LOBA. It's the good news. The bad news is that this option is only available to a homeowner or a property owner after the effective date, which is June, which means that there's that six-month time where you may be subject to certain insurance or regulatory matters. But there is another option available to you if, in fact, you wanted to take advantage of it. We're not making any recommendations either, either or. What do I do if FEMA rejects my appeal? You need to make a federal case out of it. You literally appeal their decision to the district court in Boston. We have no role in the appeal process once FEMA makes their determination. They are essentially making, putting these maps together on behalf of the town. We happily accept them to be part of the National Flood Insurance Program. But the appeal is literally, an appeal's of the federal district court. Folks want to know, what's the effective date of these flood insurance rate maps for regulatory purposes? Yeah. If, in fact, we come to town meeting in April with a zoning article, it will be the date of town meeting for zoning purposes, or some other bylaw change. For the purposes of the state building code, the effective date will be June 14th, 2014. So if you want to pull a building permit, it's okay, but you should be aware that that's the date we'll be, we'll be technically enforcing those new state building code regulations. We're letting people know that if you want a full basement, you can have a full basement. You can pull your permits, and off you go. But you should be aware that you might be implicating your insurance, and you may be implicating other permit matters after that, after that date. It's their real estate investment decision. And then, the side question, we get it all the time, is why do I, why do I need insurance if only a portion of my property is in this flood zone? My building is out, but a portion of the land is in, and all of a sudden, my mortgage bank is telling me I have to have flood insurance. And we have to tell them, and so the public knows, that we don't have a role determining your flood insurance requirements. It's your lending institution. If they think it's in their underwriting standards or risk, it's technically up to them. We at the town level don't make that decision. We do get into decisions regards to permitting, but we don't get into any of the insurance requirements. So in a nutshell, the process is ongoing. We are in the appeal period. There's still time to file an appeal. Appeals must be filed here in Town Hall, and they're submitted up to FEMA. The maps can be viewed here in Town Hall, in the engineering division. They're online. We'll try to explain them to you in the public. It's not easy stuff, but we'll do our very best. But that's where we are right now. The board knows, the public knows, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Murphy?
I've been to several association meetings this summer, and I got the advice to refer them to our website, which was very helpful. But there is multiple different categories under the flood risk.
Right.
Could you illuminate what the differences are? Because there's one that appears to be .002% or something like that, that's abstract, and is that as an area where someone needs to have flood insurance? That's a question.
The two areas you have to worry about are the velocity zones and the A zones. The A zone is known as the 1%, zone. The 2% zone is the old 500-year floodplain. Those are typically, unless you have a very nervous bank attorney or underwriter, insurance is never required, and we don't regulate in the 2% or the 500-year flood zone for any purposes under zoning or building code. So it's those AE, the elevations are known, and the VE, elevations are known, velocity zones, you have to pay attention to.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Brian, you said that those maps were not official? You mean the town, the towns' recreation of them aren't official, or the FEMA maps are not yet official?
These maps are still preliminary. They're not effective. They won't be effective for insurance purposes or building code purposes until June of next year.
Okay, my other question is, who is making the assessment as to the town's risk in terms of the town land that's in any one of these velocity zones or others?
FEMA and their, and their consultants are mapping this, all land in Falmouth, whether it's public or private, and placing them into those risk zones, so this Town Hall.
The town-owned land. Who's making the, who's reviewing that in terms of the town's exposure going forward because of the...
My understanding is that your very competent managers are aware of it. We've made them aware of it, and they're taking a ton of inventory of buildings, and that is ongoing.
We're reviewing that internally.
As to whether we should appeal?
Well, no, I'm just saying that everybody...
Would it be appropriate for a town to...
We're advising property owners to review these and to look at them, and so I'm saying that we're property owners, and we should be doing the same thing.
And, and yes. The short answer is yes. An appeal, to answer your question, my sense is, Town Hall's in, is an A zone, and that's not going to change. Usually, these appeals is when you're on the margins, or you're changing from an A to a V zone. But these folks, pretty much, the technology they're using is pretty sophisticated. And my sense is, an appeal, once we find something extraordinary, an appeal won't be, won't be worth it.
I have one more question. I know that's not, any of this is in our purview necessarily, but there are some people that I've, I've spoken with who have some sense of what their insurance costs might be, because they're now in a velocity zone. And so how do people find that out? Just by talking to their own insurance companies? And they're probably estimates at this point, but the numbers are significant in terms of the change and the increase.
And that's why the last slide, the town typically doesn't have a role in determining whether or not you're going to need flood insurance, but I can tell you this, is that the changes to the National Flood Insurance Program by the 2012 Act is essentially going to eliminate all federal subsidies of flood insurance, and that the flood risk will be based on full actuarial risk. So, yes, your premiums, if you can get the insurance, are going to go up. There's no doubt about that, just from a pure actuarial risk standpoint, because the subsidies are going away. It'd be based on 100% actuarial risk.
And I would assume that the same would be true for the town-owned property as well?
See? But the good news is, but yeah, we're looking, the town managers are looking at that. It's a question, a policy question about buildings and what you want to do, but certainly those elevations are going up, they're not going down. It's based on storm history now. Remember, the conference we had in Hyannis, Pat, with regards, DEP Commissioner came up and said, yes, these firm maps are based on history, what has happened, and the 1% risk. They are actually looking at sea level rise and progressive maps, future risk based on future conditions regards to sea level rise. Those aren't in place yet, but my sense is that the Commissioner of DEP doesn't mention out of the conference unless it's in the background. So we need to be thinking about that in terms of our public infrastructure and our buildings, absolutely.
One more question. What is the role of the DEP Commissioner, the state commissioner, in this? Any role at all?
There is a National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator at the state level. He coordinates all the FEMA programs statewide, so there is a state involvement. The federal government mandates and then passes the administrative tasks off to the states. So the worker bee is at the state level. FEMA, the Region 1, and most of these letters come from Washington, D.C., are essentially the policymakers. But there is a state role, because most of the administration is done at the state level.
Anyone else on the board?
One last question. You showed us all those paper maps. Are those paper maps overlays, or are those paper maps different sections of town?
If I go back, yeah, those are different sections of the town. There's 22...
So in other words, someone...
Right.
Would be able to pick up a map for their particular section of town?
Correct. So this square, there's actually one panel, such panel, you can see there's 22 town lots. If you just want panel number one, it would, so you just grab panel number one. They're just somewhat difficult to use. I take one apart, but I just, I lack the opposable thumb dexterity. So we did this as a public...
Chris.
You zoom right in on your property. Otherwise, they're fairly gross skin. They're hard, they're hard to read. But you can actually, if you want to, it'll be out there, they're official, and you can actually pick up your panel and take a look.
Great. Thank you. Questions from the public?
Hi, Brian.
I'm sorry, Annie, could you...
I'm sorry. Okay, Annie Seganek.
Thank you.
I'm just asking a question as a person who lives here. We have a house in West Falmouth, and most of West Falmouth is in the, the pink area, I think. What? Coral, sorry. Coral area, and so we are definitely in the floodplain. We're also in the historic district. So that's going to be an odd, you know, if you want to make a change or improve your property, and you, and the flood map says you have to go up, but of course, the historic district doesn't want you to go up, because then it won't look cute and old anymore. Is the town, is the federal government going to provide guidelines, or the state, or are we going to have to wing it locally?
What I don't know, I make up. If you have a house that's also in a flood... If you have a house that's also in a flood zone and also in a historic district, we can't make you go back and retrofit your house to meet certain floodplain requirements unless you spend more than 50% on that improvement, I believe it is. It's called a substantial improvement. If it's more than 50% of its assessed value in any one year, then you implicate the floodzone regulations. We made that change years ago, because people would come in and pull serial permits and essentially redo their entire house and bypass the flood zones, and our FEMA, the folks from FEMA got upset with us. So yes, the answer is, if in fact you put more than 50% of your house's value into that improvement, you're going to implicate the flood zones. I don't make it up.
I'm sorry to put the delay on the question, but I was actually trying to get onto the map, because I'm concerned, maybe, I was surprised that Mrs. Seganek didn't ask about this. It looks like the Little Pond Project is just now on the border of being in AE zone, when it was not before. Would that be an appropriate one to be?
Is that the one on Spring Bars?
On Spring Bars Road.
Spring Bars Road.
Is that one that we should be appealing as being a town piece of property and trying to make sure it's not falling into that distinction if we, our town engineer looks at it and says, that's really close?
Again, I can't tell from the map. This is why we zoom in on things. We could ask Peter to take a peek at it. It was, I know, partly in and partly out, under the old mapping. The technology that they use is relatively sophisticated, but we can take a look at it and see if an appeal is worth the, whether or not, either here by October 15th, or again, we can ask for probably a map revision, if in fact we need time to put the data together. You actually have to go out and shoot some surveys. The other thing you could do as part of that project, of course, is you could elevate the structures and lift the utilities out of the base flood elevation. So there are things to do that would help that project along, essentially, and help to get flood insurance.
From a planning point, or is the only point of view, is there any chance of separating the parcel so that I know if it's, one piece of it is in the zone, the insurance company may say, well, the entire property needs to be in the zone. We are planning on having conservation restrictions. Is there any way of saying that isn't one big parcel?
There's always, there's nothing bulletproof about any of this, and there's always ways to try to make sure that you protect your property interests, and we would apply them if it's the will of the board in the town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But they're out there, yes.
Mr. Fineran?
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. Would it be incorrect for me to assume that the demarcation lines of these zones are at a distance above mean high tide, and if so, what is that distance or number?
The elevations are based on what's known as the North American Vertical Datum of I allow, I will let Pete McCarty describe what that is for you, but it's essentially a line that's from mean low water, based on an ellipsoid of the earth, based on satellites taken in 1988. My understanding is your question. So it's mean low water, based on this sphere of the earth, they think it is back in 1988 to a point in time, a point in elevation. That's how they do it.
Hi, I'm Barry Fund for our Ridge View Drive. This might be a really stupid question, but I know my daughter's house, she has to have flood insurance because she's two inches, her basement is like two inches too low. If you were to pour like three inches of concrete on there, would that take it out of the floodplain? It's probably a stupid question, but I don't know.
Fair question, but I don't know if we know the answer.
No, we get those all the time. It's not. Again, for the insurance purposes, the town has no role. It's always your, whoever has a collateral interest in your property. But for regulatory purposes, if you needed to elevate something or excavate something to balance your cotton fills in your flood zone, it's something you can do for permits. For insurance, it's up to your mortgage underwriters and your bank, your insurance company.
Hi, it's Annie Seganek again, Precinct 6. Doug, I think your point about looking at the map for Spring Bars Road is interesting, but I would expect that funders and insurance companies would know. And so it might, that, it might be a lot of, it might not get you what you want, but I could be wrong.
Any other comments from the board? Questions from the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this information will be up on the webpage.
I'm sorry, I think we have one more.
The 19th.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth. Sorry to be slow. Mr. Chairman, may I ask, Brian, through you, did I understand you to say that this Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the old Water Department room, that anybody in the public can come in to consult on their property? Did I understand that correctly? Thank you.
It's, it'll be Thursday, September 19th, in the Old Water Department, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we'll pull out the panels for you, Nancy. You live on Chase Road, right?
Yes, sir.
We know where you live. We'll show you where you live and where you are. Right. We'll help you out, Nancy.
All right. Last call for questions or comments. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next on our agenda, we're going to pull up the LIP application for St. Marks Road and 761 T-Ticket Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does the board have, does the board have copies of the plans in your package? I can pass them out. Again, for your record, my name is Brian Curry. I'm the town planner. Back in 2010, Town Meeting granted permission to the Board of Selectmen to procure a piece of property on T-Ticket Highway in the corner of St. Marks Road for the purposes of affordable And we issued an RFP about a year or so ago. We had a meeting with the residents in the area to get their thoughts on what it was that they might want to see on this parcel, passing out essentially a site plan and architectural elevations of the result of requests for proposals. The respondent and the, was the Falmouth Affordable, Falmouth Housing Trust, Annie Seganek is here tonight. They have fulfilled their financial commitments, their financial feasibility commitments to the town, and now they are starting the permit process, and they have chosen a local initiative program process. As you know what those are, as the town offers the subsidy in terms of public technical assistance, there's no financial subsidy from the state or the federal government involved here. But we have donated the land for a dollar, $10 if you know what it is. They have produced this plan for three single-family homes. They're all in the vicinity of 1,300 square feet. They're little salt boxes or capes. We have talked about having a shared driveway with one curb cut at the request of the neighborhood, together with a bus stop up at the corner of T-Ticket Highway and St. Marks Road. We reserve an easement for the sidewalk that was construction, constructed outside the right of way. Oops. We would like to start this permit process with the Falmouth Housing Trust. Typically speaking, in these other LIP applications, the board has a subcommittee that reviews this first, but because this is a town project, we thought we would just come directly to the board. The Affordable Housing Committee, as the local housing partnership, has voted to endorse the plan and sent a letter to DHCD, DH is CD, to that effect, and I can offer that for you, Mr. Chairman, to the commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Schule, the chairman. And what this LIP application does, it starts essentially a friendly 40B, go up with the state, comprehensive permit issues for the three houses, it's zone residency, but that I think is the only waiver that from our rules and regulations under zoning that would we be pursued. So that is the project in a nutshell. Annie is here to answer any of your other questions, but I would ask for consideration tonight to be partners with the Falmouth Housing Trust on this very worthy affordable housing project. Send the application along to the state, and then we'll see them at the Board of Appeals later on during that process.
For the board's application, the letter from the Affordable Housing Committee noted in here that at their meeting on August 15, 2013, the committee voted to support the St. Marks Road 761 T-Ticket Highway application. Questions from the board?
I'd like to make a comment about how much material there was to read about this one action. It seems like I have an awfully lot of information that I went through, and I kind of checked it, and I thought, well, I think they really want me to know all about that 40B, and I think that St. Marks Road, I know exactly where that area is and how long that's been discussed, and I couldn't possibly find anything that I could talk about, except on your flyer. And the only thing I will say about that is there's a sample advertisement of a flyer, one of these sheets among probably 60 or 70, and it happens to say it's a three-bedroom with three baths. And it's just a little technical kind of thing, but I thought after I spent all that time reading everything in here, that it was kind of interesting. So I don't have any questions about the...
We always put that in there to make sure you read it.
Well, you know, I do that kind of every now and then, and I think it probably is on purpose, but I always bring it up. So there couldn't possibly be a question that isn't answered in all of these pages.
Mr. Jones?
One I could not find the answer to, and I've checked it a few times, and I may be forgetting the terminology of Mrs. Seganek, is who is going to be the officer to make sure this stays affordable? Is that the Town Housing Authority? Is that, because I don't, I didn't think it could be the same organization who actually did the project.
It is.
Is it? Okay.
Well, we're going to partner with TRI to do the lottery and qualify the buyers, but then we will retain, we will retain monitoring on the project, and I really feel strongly that that has to happen. I've been here before, I've beat this drum. If we're going to build it, we're going to monitor it.
Great, thank you.
Question?
Annie, while you're there, I just have a question. Are there other projects that you were monitoring as well, or will this be the first?
No, oh, no. We were monitoring Eastridge Road, which we built in pre-May 2006, I think. And then we also monitor Mill Farm Way, which were, those are market rate condos, so that's a typical 40B, built by Miller-Starbuck. So 75% of the units are market rate, 25% of the units are affordable. So we monitored those as well.
Okay, thanks. Maybe I do have one more question. Excuse me. How many applicants do you normally get on something this time when you're doing three?
Oh, that's a good question. Well, I can tell you that on my ready-to-buy list that I keep for the town, I have about a dozen people waiting. You know, not everybody wants a three-bedroom, two-bath, not everyone's in a position to buy when it's available, but when resales come into town, are available in town for other 40Bs, I do promote them and notify my ready-to-buy list. So I don't anticipate any concerns in terms of selling, if that was a question.
Well, you have two pages of lists of all the places that you're going to advertise.
Yes, advertise.
So I thought you really would probably have a lot of people.
Yes.
That would be interesting.
I hope so.
Well, you're certainly sending it to a lot. And the other was that you also told us what the footage of the doorways, is that because that's wheelchair?
So one unit will be visitable, and you're correct. It's not, we don't really call it accessible, because it doesn't meet the strict ADA qualifications, but visitable is 32 inches wide doorway, a zero-step clearance into the property, and then one first-floor bath that can be negotiated by someone in a wheelchair.
That's the word I've never heard before.
Visitable, yes. It's a funny word.
You sure are.
But it is, it is sort of the new thing, so now you're hip to the new thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say, this has been a long time coming. I know how long this has been on the border, and I am so happy that we're finally there.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion, second to approve. Any comments on the motion? Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, so the board has before it the alternatives, as we requested from the town manager's office during our last discussion of the wind turbine issue. We'll obviously, as previously noted, and for those in the public who were not here earlier, we'll be, as promised, the board will be having public feedback, will be accepting public comment about this particular issue, about the alternatives for the future operation of the wind turbines. We'll be doing that next week. We want to give public the opportunity to review the information that was presented to us, and then provide feedback for us next week. The board this evening is not going to take any public comment on this particular item on the agenda. We do have this, we have the letter from the health, the Board of Health. Are there any questions or comments that the board wants to proceed with this evening, or we're going to be looking forward to next week at this point?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a PowerPoint presentation, if the board would like to retain that. I think it'd be advisable that we get the information out to the public, what it is that we're going to be talking about, so I think it'd be wise to hear from them.
Very good. Will do.
Just a quick comment. I assisted the town planner in his presentation. He just hit the power button, which means it's going to take a few minutes for it to warm back up.
All right. Do you, so do you want a few minutes then? We can bring something else off the agenda if needed.
I just have one question. I just want to take a drink.
All right. Briefly, we'll run to the summary of actions then. There's a couple of items on here that we're not going to address this evening. Item number five, eight, and 10, we're not going to address this evening. I'll read through these, and if anyone would like to hold them, please let me know.
Mr. Chairman, before we get going on this, just for disclosure purposes, I'll do a blanket disclosure, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Item number one, second-hand dealer's license. Actually, you, we'll finish this, and then we'll move on. So we're going to hold number one. Item number two, special event, 29th Annual Autumn Escape Bike Trek, September 27.
Let's hold.
Okay. Item number three, special event, Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride, October 6.
Let's hold.
Would you like to hold sign variance as well?
Also.
Okay. Item number six, one-day local license craft beer festival, Barnstable County Fairgrounds, September 28.
Let's hold.
Item number seven, fiscal year 2014 Coastal Pollute Remediation Grant Program, Town Manager's Support Letter. Item number nine, acknowledged COMPASS name change. Item number 11, did, Mr. Sussa, did you want to hold that at all, or are we?
The, I'm suggesting that the board delay action on eight and 10 both.
Okay. Item 11, though, the...
Item 11, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just had provided some additional information. This is a request that the board announce the interest in this acquisition, and I wanted to provide the board some background information, particularly since the suggestion was that this was an abutting property. this was an abutting property, which indeed is not.
As an announcement, so it has to be a hold, right?
Yeah, we'll hold that then. Item number 12, payments from the Marine Environmental Services Department donation account. And item number 13, payment from the Bike Ways Committee donation account.
I move seven, nine, 12, and 13.
Okay. Motion to approve seven, nine, 12, and 13, and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. All right. And we'll come back to the held items at a later time. Ms. Harper?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We have a brief PowerPoint, and Heather and I are teaming up on the presentation. We'll go ahead and launch into this summary of what you have been presented and what has, as of today, been posted on the town website as well. First, a general overview. Wind turbine alternatives. The processes for encouraging informed review, discussion, reflecting community sensitivity, and delaying a definitive decision for multiple years. Of course, as the board is well aware, that's been the process which you have been following in a dedicated attempt to search for a reasonable consensus solution, and we are where we are at this point in time. In brief, a decision must be made soon, or the town is in jeopardy of having decisions made by others. Again, that's further delineated in the report. Moving on to the next page. On August 12, 2013, the Board of Selectmen has already voted to affirm the following. First point, that the Selectmen have requested staff further detail and articulate the mitigation options. Four in particular were highlighted. The 20-hour operation for both turbines, number one. Number two, the 16-hour operation for Wind One and the 24-hour operation for Wind Two. The third alternative or option was a 20-hour operation for Wind One and a 24-hour operation for Wind Two. And the fourth mitigation option being the full operation of both turbines. Those four have been explored and are part of the report you have received. Continuing, as per Town Council responsible, a resolution must include a mitigation component. The preferred alternatives include production... All include production exceeding 80%. Staff will suggest a package of mitigation options. Only in those cases, meaning 80% or more, do wind turbine revenues support the creation of a reasonable mitigation fund. And finally, among those four items, the board has voted, the anticipated timetable for implementation includes an operational decision in September, meaning this month, with implementation beginning in October of 2013. Continuing, whatever decision is made, the Board of Selectmen will have to take the lead with assistance as required to advance the decision with the community and the neighbors. And ultimately, this is clearly in the community's best interest to move forward. And I will have Heather make some comments as well. Heather?
Just moving forward to the next section of the report the board received on Friday, discussing the option of a sound or an acoustic easement to affirmatively respond to the complaints of neighbors who may reside near wind turbines. In some cases, the requested... That were requested for review, modest curtailment is proposed in addition to proposed easements. The first report established that operations in excess of 80% is necessary to generate sufficient revenue to fund sound or acoustic easements, and the data logged and collected clearly indicates that distance matters. A fund for acquisition of easements and exploration of settlement of existing claims is recommended, and that that be no less than $520,000. That the town appoint a facilitator to address details of all matters related to the distribution of funds, excluding those in active litigation, and that 25% to 33% of net revenue after expenses is recommended for this purpose. The next slide, please. This is the breakdown of the four scenarios, and if you recall, it actually shows in the material that the board has some of the assumptions that are included in this, and I think it's important just to review what those assumptions are. And this goes for all of the scenarios that were looked at at the last meeting. It assumes that the operating reserve fund is replenished, the obligation to deliver Wind One recs to the Mass Clean Energy Center is forgiven, and all recs from Wind One are assumed to be resold on the spot market. And it further assumes that the note for Wind Two remains as an unobligated 0% loaned, 100% forgiveness. So this simply shows you the available revenue, the net cash flow, at each of the production for the selected options the board asked us to pursue. And this looks at a timeframe of 11 years, from 2015 to 2025. Next slide, please. We also took a look at the production capacity and the percentage of recommended revenue being in a range from 25% to 33%. And you can see that ranges from about $520,000 for both turbines running at a 20-hour operation, up to $685,000 at 33%. And that would be something the board could discuss at its discretion, and those funds obviously increase as the production value increases.
Is that yearly or total?
That's over the term, the 11-year term. Next slide, please. And then, did you want to...
I'll jump in and continue at this point. The basic recommended operating plan, again, in some summary. The town's actions may include curtailment. Flicker curtailment is not recommended in addition to time-of-day curtailment. That's further expanded upon in the detailed report, fundamentally because the operating system for the turbines is designed for a single time-of-day adjustment, not multiple time-of-day adjustments. Fund revenue is determined by the characteristics of each operating plan, and those have been laid out in the previous slide for those four scenarios. You can see the variation in revenues. The town shall request a contribution from the state, state agencies and others. Includes a Mass Clean Energy Center-sponsored sound study. Establishing a zone for sound or acoustic easements. It is suggested that such a zone consider all homes within a third of a mile of the turbines, with impact diminishing by distance. That homeowners grant sound or acoustic easement and execute a release of claims, of all claims. A facilitator slash representative will have the authority to negotiate individually with each party. A facilitator is limited only by the funds available and may negotiate and effectuate a voluntary sale, sound easements, and release of claims. Compensation may be used fully at the discretion of the owner of the property. Continuing on the next slide. These, again, are the four alternatives that were summarized in table form and selected by the board to be focused on at the meeting earlier in August. Number one, the 20-hour operation of both turbines, including an eight-hours total of curtailment per 24-hour day. The $520,000 initial funding is anticipated over that 11-year period through 2025. That's at the rate of 25% set aside, as has already been mentioned. Moving on to alternative two, that involves Wind One operating at 16 hours per day and Wind Two 24 hours per day. That includes also a total of eight hours of a curtailment per 24-hour day, but a different mix between the turbines and operating hours, obviously. That would generate over that timeframe through 2025, $590,000 to be supplemented by others, as may be feasible. Moving forward for alternative number three, that involves 20 hours for Wind One operation, 24 hours per day for Wind Two, for a total of four hours of curtailment per 24-hour day. By contrast, that would generate $780,000 through the year 2025 at the 25% set aside amount, again, to be supplemented by others as feasible. And finally, full operation being the fourth alternative, that would require mitigation of sound at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road, as we have discussed. It would generate at the 25% level $968,000 by the year 2025 if that operational scenario is selected. The next remaining action steps for the board. Number one, the Selectmen choose a definitive operating plan, again, in this month of September. The implementation to be effective in October of 2013. There needs to be appointed a facilitator representative. Also, initiate the establishment of the previously described fund, which would be sourced in the various amounts depending upon which scenario is determined. That process would begin... The initiation of that would begin between October and December of this year. Town meeting actions would be needed. The Board of Selectmen would, we propose, authorize a special town meeting. There would be funds appropriated to the fund that we have suggested, and special legislation would be amended to the extent necessary. We'd be consulting with Town Council on that. We would, as noted, seek additional contributions from the state and others, as is feasible, to supplement this fund that the board would establish. And the last two points, we would seek confirmation of a 0% interest and loan forgiveness, which are imperative to this process, and seek confirmation of renewable energy credit relief in agreeable terms. Those have been part of the assumptions for establishing the revenue projections we have made and are imperative assumptions moving forward. That is our PowerPoint, members of the board. I also do want to acknowledge and thank, obviously, my colleague Assistant Town Manager, Heather Harper, for her fine work in this regard as part of a four-person internal team on this process of our initial report and also this follow-up report. I also want to thank Town Council Frank Duffy for his able assistance and participation, as well as our colleague Finance Director Jennifer Petit for her excellent help and input through this process of developing the current report. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I just want to note a minor typo on page two, which actually has already been corrected by Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, so that what appears on the website is already has its correction. But in the second paragraph, the second sentence, it is noted when it talks about complaints logged, just beyond the 60% paren, again, in that second line of the second paragraph, it says, "And five of 11 homes." Actually, five should be four, F-O-U-R. So what is in parenths there, the numeric four is correct. The five was just an inadvertent typo. And later on, where the sentence is completed, on the third line of that second paragraph, the 36% figure is correct. So it's four out of 11 complaints logged for a total of 36% in that entry, and we wanted to clarify that for the board. Again, that is clarified and accurate on the website already, and the report that you have received is now on the town website, which we have just summarized in PowerPoint format. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to answer any questions you members of the board may have.
Quick question I have just on the last six and seven. Could you comment again on the likelihood of those happening, of the confirmation of the 0% loan becoming a grant and the recs being forgiven? Is there any expectation that we do something to have that happen?
Well, just... We are in discussions, as the board has already authorized and directed with the Mass CEC on those, and of course, as the board's aware, we saw some earlier paperwork from them prior to the vote, which occurred in May, of course. I guess my best way of describing it at this point is that our discussions have been cordial and engaging. There is a general expectation that the Board of Selectmen will be moving forward in the direction you've already outlined. We've shared that with representatives from the state, meaning that the board, they have seen the motion already made by the board, the four alternatives focused upon, although none of those embraced at this point, and the general direction, which includes a representation that we would be attempting to generate revenues of 80% or more, and the operating necessary to generate those. So there is, I would say, a general expectation that we'll continue moving in that direction. We have nothing in writing, nor have we made any representations as to where that would be, other than that general understanding. I think were we to go in another direction, we would have to reengage and consider things beyond that. As a Selectman, as you're aware, has been part of our assumption, is that we would secure relief regarding the renewable energy credits, and were that not to be the case, all our financial numbers would have to be recalculated, as our responsibility would be considerably higher.
Are there any questions from the board?
I just want to make clear that before we take public comment, we're not necessarily tied to all, just these four alternatives. It can be a homogenous mix and match of what these other alternatives are. So just leave it all on the table.
All right. As noted, we'll be accepting public comment next week. We'll have a public comment session so that any interested parties can provide some feedback on these options and the steps that have been outlined here this evening. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. One thing I overlooked. It's just the board had inquired, particularly Selectman Jones, about the sound study protocol, and that is something that we just noted with one entry that we're working with Mass CEC on, so we would have more information for the board on that. But that remains an important anticipated component in this entire process, so I intended to underscore that, and wanted to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda, we have an application for a transfer of all alcoholic common victual or license. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Quicks Hole LLC DBA, Quicks Hole Boathouse, has applied for a transfer of ownership on an all-alcoholic common victual or license located at 29 Railroad Avenue, Woods Hole, Massachusetts. Application has also been made for an entertainment license and an automatic amusement device license. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's meeting room this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just two quick issues before we proceed with this. Number one is timing on applications like this or wetlands, any type of hearings. I thought the board decided that because we don't time issues, that we would take these first in the agenda so that we... The applicants, if they had legal counsel, did not have to incur additional costs as we moved through. So just for the future, if we...
And duly noted, and my apologies to the board, this one, I had not recognized this as a proper hearing when it was on the... Put on the agenda, but if... We'll make sure that the town manager's office, in the future, that these items do come first on the agenda.
Great. And the next issue is that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license, and because of the close proximity of this license to the license I hold in the Village of Woods Hole, I will recuse myself from the discussion on this. Thank you.
All right. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative here this evening? Good evening, and my apologies for the wait.
No worries. My name is Beth Colt, and I'm here with Stephanie Mikhalezak. I'm the owner of the Woods Hole Inn and the Quicks Hole Restaurant, and I'm seeking the transfer of the liquor license at 29 Railroad Avenue in a building currently known as the Lee Side. And I've got nothing more to say than that. And I've got nothing more to say than that.
Okay. Mr. Jones, do we have recommendations?
We have recommendations from Brian Reed, Lieutenant Brian Reed from the Police Department, and they have conducted the courier checks, and the Police Department has no problem with their request. Fire Department does talk about the adherence for a crowd manager under the entertainment license, and that there will have to be a new FERTS service permit from the Department of Health, from Board of Health, to operate through the establishment.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I think, I guess that when I read this, that you wanted to purchase the Lee Side, as many of us know for many years. And I was very pleased to also understand that you had the other corner as your property. So I thought it was just such a good match. And as I have talked about, how many papers we go through in reading, and we had quite a few for you also, that every bit of it was in order. I felt very good about the transfer of the license and also the new ownership, and I, and there is such a strong family feeling in Woods Hole, and it's good to know that the owner of those two corners is going to belong to you, and you've done a fine job on, and have a good reputation. So I just wanted to commend you on that and each thing that I read, read about yourself.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Okay, let's try to keep it to questions at this time.
Oh, excuse me. No comments.
All right.
There's a comment time.
Yes. Any questions from the board? All right. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition of this, anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none. How would the board like to proceed?
I'll make a motion. You say, okay, that I, I will make a motion to have the transfer of the all-alcoholic license and the entertainment license from the, to Quicks Hole Boathouse.
Ms. Moffitt, before we make a motion on the, on the item before, so we do need to close the hearing first, so would you like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion to close the hearing, and a motion and second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hearing is now closed. All right, discussion, how, actually, how would we like to proceed at this point?
Okay. Now I will make a motion for a transfer of the all-alcoholic license at Quicks, Quick, it's really...
Quicks Hole, Quicks Hole.
Quicks Hole, we want to put an S on there.
Yep.
Quicks Hole Boathouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the transfer of license. Any discussion on the motion?
I agree with everything that Selectman Moffitt said, and I think that taking the Lee Side is just, I think it's a great move for you, and I think it's a great move for Woods Hole, and so I can't wait to come down and see it.
Thank you. Well, we're really excited about it. I appreciate that.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's just the alcohol. We still have the entertainment.
No, she included all three.
Yes.
Attention.
She included the entertainment license and the amusement device license all in the same motion. Didn't you not?
Yes.
Is that, I thought you did.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Veterans Council policy.
Oh, yes.
I'm not sure if this, Mr. Suso or Mr. Jones, which one of you wants to introduce this?
Well, I introduce this. I don't think, Mr. Duffy is not here anymore, so I'll take it. Are you sure you have in your packet a recommendation from Town Council as to how we proceed with the appointment for the Veterans Council? The basic plan is that the Veterans Council could either be a seven or a nine-member board. Five of those positions would be upon the recommendation of the organizations that we've had in the past, of the Veterans of the Foreign War, American Legion, Amvets, Disabled American Veterans, and the Elks Lodge, and that the, if the Board of Selectmen had a problem with any of those appointments, we would have veto power on any of those appointments. Otherwise, those people would be appointed, and then the Board of Selectmen would have the opportunity to either point two or four more people after advertising it the way we do all other appointments. I did meet, as suggested with Mr. Mustafa, to discuss this. He and I did have a chance to talk about it, and his plan was to take it to the other organizations and let them know this is how we are hoping to proceed.
Well, I have a question. I know, I believe that the, that the statute that has been referred to reads something about the appointments are for one year, and yet here in this comment by Town Council, he suggested something like, that we could, we would follow, that we would follow the same, the same requirements under the charter for appointing to the council. So I just wanted to make sure that this was either going to be one year, or they were going to be three-year, but right now, this doesn't address the term, and I just thought it should address the term, to be clear, if it's a policy. And then the, in the, and then, if, if not, then there, there should be something about how, how someone reapplies for the position, or how they're, if, if it's only a one year, do they go through that process again, the next year, in, in terms of each of the organizations renominating either the same person or nominating somebody else? Do you follow what I'm saying? I'm probably making it more complicated than it is.
No.
It just doesn't say what the term is, and I think the policy should say what the term is.
And you're absolutely right. There's, I think, the question of term should be addressed. There's also the question here, as noted in the draft, that it would be seven or nine members, so we'll need to determine that as well. Any other questions from the board right now?
I, I think you've done a great job, because no one ever wants to diminish the job that these veterans organizations have done over the years, and they've been represented very, very well by their representative. I don't have a problem with including other groups, meaning, you know, other folks that might want to serve and help with this organization. I do have a couple of notes. Number one is, you brought up a good point, Mr. Chairman, about the seven or nine. I think we really probably need to come up with a determination. The next item is, things change and things evolve. We've got a very active military support group in this community. I think that we could add them as a representative group, meaning that they could have a representative that would serve them, like the same as the Stable Veterans, the Elks Lodge, the American Legion, and the, the Veterans of the VFW, so that we could add an additional group to that. So that we would change the, the two to four members from, to one to three, so we would have representatives from all those groups, including the military support group, which happens to be a very active organization in this community. So my suggestion would be that we add one, and that we go to the nine. And I think by statute, Mrs. Flynn, I think you're right. I think it's one-year appointments by state statute.
Yes.
So I don't think it needs to be addressed in, in the policy, from the best of my knowledge.
But if it is a one-year, why not state it?
We'll state it, just say it.
Be appointed for one, and just say the word.
So for all it's worth, those are my two cents worth in there.
Because otherwise, we would have to look at staggered terms, if it were more than one year, and, and it, we'd rather just follow the standard.
I, I agree with that.
Question, any other questions from the board right now? They do want to give Mr. Mustafa the opportunity to offer his two cents. I know he was involved in the process, and we do appreciate your participation in helping us out with this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank Selectmen Jones for meeting with me, and I think it's starting to work out. The, we do have a few questions. The first one is, right now, it consists of five organizations, and then it goes on to say, up to 15. I would respectfully ask that the board consider no more than seven. It's going to be just too many people there. So if that 15 could be dropped down to seven, that would be one thing. The next thing, down in the, let's see, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, on the end, second sentence where it says, "The Veterans Council shall have seven or nine," again, I would respectfully say, remove the nine and leave it at seven. The, down at the bottom of that, and I think there has to be a little bit of a redoing of the wording relative to, says here, "If the Board of Selectmen specifically disapproves a nominee for good cause, they shall appoint remaining members of the Veterans Council by interviewing candidates and selecting an appointee in the same manner." I believe if the board felt that a particular person, we'll just say, for example, representing the VFW was not qualified in your eyes, then I would say that the wording here should be that it would be sent back to the commander of the VFW to come in with a new applicant. And I believe just those three things right now would make the thing very viable and workable.
On the last point, I think that was the intention. It was not that those two sentences ran into each other, was that candidates, unless the Board of Selectmen specifically disapproves a nominee for a good cause, with the idea that, in that case, that group would be approached for another candidate, not that there doesn't be appointment of two to four.
I don't have a problem with that.
My two cents here, I agree with Mr. Mustafa that, having been on a number of committees in my service to the town, I find that five or seven tends to be a very working, a good working number. Anything greater than that tends to become unwieldy, and anything less than that, you tend to run afoul of open meeting laws when two of three people happen to meet on the street. So I would second Mr. Mustafa's recommendation for seven individuals. And with respect to Mr. Murphy's suggestion about the military support group, what I would suggest is that we add a line here at the end, where the board says, "The Board of Selectmen will appoint the remaining," and in this case, I would recommend two members of the council in the same manner it appoints members of other committees. I would suggest another line that would state, "Preference should be given to those with a personal interest in the affairs of veterans." For example, member of a military support group, a Gold Star parent, or other such individual.
On the seven or nine issue, I guess I wouldn't, the reason I was supportive of the flexibility, is if we end up having six candidates who really want to be involved in this, at that point, our discretion would be saying, well, we have the five appointed, we have a bunch of people who want to do it, we could make it a larger committee, as, and it would be at our discretion to do so, as opposed to if we only get two people applying, we then say, well, that's what we have, and we could have that flexibility to make that choice.
Can I ask a question? I, I thought you were giving us the choice, so what you're saying is, it would be either seven or nine?
No, I'm saying that the...
To leave it in the policy, is the policy, okay.
If you leave it at seven or nine, you have that choice every year to say, what is it?
Okay.
Maybe that's inconsistent and unclear, and maybe clarity would be a better thing, but that was certainly what the intention was, that we could see how things went and had the freedom, you'd have the committee be a seven-person committee or a nine-member committee, depending on what interest there was in it. And certainly, if it's a seven or nine, there's a much greater chance of pulling in some of these organizations, other organizations who would like to be involved in it.
I guess my only concern about that, first of all, is that it means in any given year, we could have seven or we could have nine, and, and when you have that lack of consistency, depending on the board's discretion, then things sort of get a little dicey from time to time.
I understand.
The other thing, too, is as far as interest goes, I think one of, I think the Beach Committee or the Bike Race Committee are two excellent examples where we actually have people who are lined up and waiting. And those are two seven-member committees where we have, we've never had a shortage of applicants for those committees, because we've kept it limited to seven members. And there's always somebody queued up and ready to go if somebody turns out or somebody decides to leave. There's such an interest in those committees that there's never a shortage of applicants. Versus, for example, where we have the Historical Commission and the Historic Districts Commission, where we've had issues with quorums there, because, in fact, you may recall, the Historic Districts Commission, we actually reduced the size of it, because years ago, its size had been expanded, and then they started to have a problem with getting an adequate number of applicants, that they had quorum issues, and we actually had to reduce the size of the Historic Districts Commission. So, or maybe it was the Historical Commission, I'm starting to...
Historical Commission.
Was it the Historical Commission? So that's something to keep in mind, that sometimes smaller is better, because it gives us that, the ability to, to have potential candidates queued up. And oftentimes, certainly my experience when I was liaison to the Beach Committee and to the Bike Race Committee, was that these folks would show up anyway, and they would participate in the meetings, whether they were a member of the committee or not, and it was a, a great, almost like a, an internship, if you will, that these folks ended up becoming parts of, becoming actual full members of the committee as time had dawned, so.
So for the purpose of a, of a motion and argument, which we can then debate, I would, the first amendment I would make is on the first page, fourth paragraph, second sentence, "The Veterans Council shall have seven members appointed to one-year terms by the Board of Selectmen." Appointed by the Board of Selectmen to one-year terms.
Is everyone in agreement with that, or do we want to take a vote?
I'm okay with that.
I don't have a problem with that, that's fine.
By consensus, then?
The second change would be adding, as Mr. Mustafa suggested, for good cause, so on the last page, unless the Board of Selectmen specifically disapproves a nominee for good cause, under which conditions the nominating organization will be approached for another And then we do have to strike the or four members in the last sentence, and if you would want to state what your suggested sentence was.
You know, can I, can I jump in there though a little bit? I honestly believe that, that we should give a record, on appointment, things change, times change, to the military support group. I mean, look at the things they've done recently in the community. They built a, you know, a handicap ramp in honor of a veteran that was killed in the war. They're, they're in constant contact with our current, current, not veterans, current folks who are serving in the war, who, who we want to provide services to when they come home. I think we want to be able to make sure they're engaged in your organization, because you want to be able to hand the baton to the next generation. God forbid that hopefully we, at some point in time, we only have veterans that serve in peacetime, but unfortunately, that's not the case. And we have a lot of veterans right now that are coming home, and I think we want that conduit, and I would like to see the military support group added to one of the organizations, just to be able to have a representative that would represent them on this committee.
The only reason I hesitate on that is I know that they've invited to come to the meetings, and again, it's not in a voting method, manner, but they haven't shown up.
We invite a lot of folks to meetings, but they, they don't get an opportunity to make a vote. There's a big difference there.
While I understand where you're coming from, one of my concerns is that unlike these other veterans organizations, which are, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mustafa, I believe they are generations old. I think the Military Support Group, while it's an admirable organization, is relatively young, and as Mr. Jones pointed out, their participation has, although they may be invited, they've been invited to attend, they may not have always been there. I think one of my concerns is that if we're going to open up membership to other organizations, I would be concerned about the longevity and the staying power of these organizations. I think there's certainly an opportunity where we're appointing a seven-member committee here and offering two seats to the general public, that the Military Support Group or a member thereof could certainly be appointed, and it leaves open the possibility that if... And it leaves open the possibility that if they, as an organization, does not have the longevity of these other veterans organizations, that it gives us that flexibility to appoint another member of the civilian population who may have an interest in military, in the veterans' affairs, such as, for example, Gold Star Parents.
Well, I was going to say, these appointments come up every year, and the Military Support Group, they have, they do a tremendous amount of work. They raise a lot of money, they do a lot of projects. Now they've got the Wounded Warrior Project, and I'm sure everybody's working on in another couple of weeks. They do a lot. And maybe that's their mission. And maybe they don't see themselves yet as maybe ready to do something else. So maybe we can talk with them, but over the course of a year, since these appointments are only a year, there would be an opportunity perhaps next year, if, unless, because we wanted to kind of wrap this up now instead of-
We, and with all due respect, and I'm shocked that it's not in the file, but we did receive a letter from them asking that they could be represented.
Oh, they do.
And I know it was sent to the town manager as well. So I am shocked that it's not in the file.
I do recall that letter, but I think it was not, not in the context of being a member organization, as these other veterans groups are, but in the context of, because we were opening up the possibility of having other individuals serve in addition to the member organizations, that they wanted to have a seat at the table, so to speak.
I don't know.
I do recall that, yes.
So-
So we have some divisions. I'd like to, in the interest of moving things along, I'd like to get a feel for where we are, because if we need to take a vote on this particular issue, then we can. Do we want to include the Falmouth Military Support Group as a specific organization in here?
As a sixth member?
I'll make that motion. Let's, let's just get on with it, and then we'll see whether, how it flows. As a sixth member, member, under the word, and then there would be one at large.
One at large.
Right.
So that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on it? We've talked about this already, so. Okay.
If they're willing, I would say, if they're willing and they-
Well, and I think that's one of my concerns, is we haven't even approached them to find out if they want-
I'm telling you that we received a letter from, from the town manager, I know it was sent to him as well. I was copying on it, so.
And we all received copies, and I do recall that, but the interest there was not necessarily as a member organization, it was as an individual who was a key member of that organization asking to be considered. My concern is that we haven't even consulted this organization to say, can you folks provide somebody on an annual basis to be a member of the Veterans Council? Because they may not be able to do that.
I would almost rather wait a year, see if one of them applies and we appoint them, and then if it seems like that something's gonna work, change the policy to add it.
I mean, I've had conversation with them, their officers have asked that. I'm just passing on the word here. I don't know why the letter wasn't in the file, but it is what it is, so.
All right. Motion and a second, to add, the Military Support Group is one of the organizations that has a seat at the table. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposition? Opposed?
I'm convinced either way. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna say aye to you.
Okay. Four to one, they'll have a seat at the table then. And then, so the board will appoint one member. And then, if I may, as Mr. Jones noted, I'd like to ask that we add the, the last, a last line to this, stating that preference, "The Board of Selectmen will appoint the remaining member of the council in the same manner it appoints members of other committees. Preference should be given to those with a personal interest in the affairs of veterans, such as Gold Star Parents."
I'm okay with that.
That's fine.
Any objections to that line? All right, then by consensus, we have our policy.
Now, it has been posted, their openings on the Veterans Council, it was posted about four weeks ago.
Joe Quinellianni, Precinct Nine, DAV, present representative, and hopefully for the future one. Off-the-wall question, any of your appointees are Falmouth residents, correct? They have to be Falmouth residents? I'm just asking in case we get someone that's-
Resident taxpayer voter, registered voter, taxpayer, that's what our all-
And certainly in the case of, of the now six organizations that have a seat at the table, it would be incumbent upon your organizations to-
Just asking in case we got someone that might say, I'm interested in all this organization, that organization, and not a year-round resident. Okay? And if you're appointing, who's gonna be the representative from your board, are you gonna have a designated person to come to and sit at the meetings? So if we have a question, we can come back to them, not like the four emails that went in Cloud Nine someplace.
That would probably be addressed through our liaison policy and the assignment of a board liaison to the Veterans Council.
Yeah, so we have a representative, so if we got a question, we can then approach that individual, and they can come to you, instead of us trying to request position, a gender meeting, and four emails are sent out, and they went to La La Land someplace. So I'm just wondering if you appoint somebody, that's the person we go to. And then from there, that person can come to you and talk to you that there's a problem, or there's a question, or the Galaby question, or whatever, and they can come back and say, yeah, okay, it's all corrected. So I just wanted to make those two points. Someone's a representative that's gonna come to the meetings, and someone that's a town resident. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for clarification, I believe the way our committees are taxpayer, registered voter, or, are considered residents of the community. So, Mr. Quinellianni, you mentioned someone who's a summer resident. If they're, they're here part of the year, and they go to Florida, or they go somewhere else, and they're a registered voter, they're considered a resident of the town file.
Do we want to put a timetable?
If someone's a three-month, three-month resident, and you appoint that individual to three, nine months, we're not gonna have representation for that individual.
Well, in this case, there are, again, there are six organizations, and each of those organizations will provide nominees to the board, as they have in the past. In this case, there's essentially a new at-large individual who would be appointed by the board.
I'm just saying, if you get another representative from another organization, and they decide, well, I'm gonna take out of here during the winter months, that's when we're the busiest, starting to set up in October for, you know, different functions, and then again, in May for the different functions, and then again, going out and trying to raise money to help some of the cost of food and fuel and stuff. So if you have a part-time resident, that's not gonna aid the veterans. It's gonna aid that individual, it's not gonna aid the veterans that we constantly work with. And it's not like we-
Concerns are noted, and we will take that into consideration. Thank you.
If I can, I mean, we ask people what their availability is when they request to serve on a committee. And I would not be too favorable to appoint someone if they said they were only gonna be here three months out of the year and leave all the work to, for nine months, to somebody else. So we always ask people about their availability. It seems to me that we should probably also take that into consideration with the Veterans Council as well.
Should we set a deadline as to when the applications are due, so we can actually make these appointments?
It'd be a great idea, if they have Veterans Day just right around the corner.
Very good idea.
Is it two, can we say it's the end of September?
Oh, I don't know if she can advertise that quickly.
It's advertised.
Oh, it's already advertised.
Brent had said that in our last time discussion, let's go ahead and advertise it, so that we can proceed it.
So, end of September, then?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe if the town manager will contact the six organizations and ask for their nominees.
Very good.
And in the interim, we would hope that they would continue to work business as usual, under the assumption that nothing's changed.
We're active.
Thank you.
I'd ask one more question. Since they're coming the end of September, and our appointments usually go from June, or July 1st to June 30th, we might want to consider appointing just to June 30th, and then get them in the same cycle as everybody else, if that's agreeable to the board. Instead of a year from the date of appointment, I don't know.
It's actually, it's posted, his appointment is till, the appointment is posted as until June 2020.
Oh, it is, okay.
Right.
Did I hear you say that new letters that come in from the different veterans groups are the ones already in file, will be sufficient?
The ones in the file should be sufficient.
Okay. I'm just wondering, we got a meeting coming up, and we can turn around and tell all the veterans groups, we need new letters, or the ones that file sufficient.
Unless you folks want to present different nominees to the board, I think the letters you provided-
I'm just gonna make sure that the ones that are existing files, okay?
Perfectly fine, thank you. All right. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are the minutes of meetings. We have the August 26 public session.
Mr. Chairman, I can't vote on these, but I would like to note that the draft is dated August 12th, and I think it really means August 26th, just so somebody knows.
Okay, so it's just the title, so we will correct that?
Yeah, just the title, yeah.
All right, public session minutes for August 22nd, or August 26th, excuse me. It's been a long day.
Remove approval of the minutes of August 26th.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second to move approval of the minutes of August 26th as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And one abstention. And we have the minutes of the executive session on August 26th.
Move approval of the minutes of executive session of August 26th and not release.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes of August 22nd and not, or 26th, excuse me, and not to release. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And one abstention. All right, and so we'll return to the summary of actions. We've already disposed with items seven, nine, 12, and 13, and the signature form should be circulating.
I can pass it back down.
Okay. And Ms. Moffett, you held item number one.
Yes, and I, I held it if there was anyone here, but apparently, I mean, from the Harmony Hut repair, I, at the time I held that, there were a lot more people here, and I thought maybe there was. I just had, my question was, why had they allowed the license to expire, which was in April? And had they had any difficulties with some of the materials and things they handle? And, I don't know, we don't know why it expired, and we don't know if everything worked, everything is in good shape there. But anyhow, there's no one to answer that, so we'll just let it go.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And Ms. Moffett, you hold number two.
Yes, and every one of them has to do with, I just wanted to speak with someone. And if there's no one, I guess I just can't hold them, and I don't know, and the people aren't here, but I don't know how to respond to this. I hold, and I hope there's someone here to answer the question.
Well, if you've got a concern-
We can delay it, you can ask the question.
You could delay it, or-
Well, you'll have to, I mean, they, they want to do this on the 27th, and I'm sure there's been some type of, you know, advertising and everything. Maybe if I just would give, I see, I mean, a while ago, you said I couldn't have the conversation, so I don't know if I'm doing this right or not. When I read the summary of actions, I have all kinds of questions about why we are allowing these permits to happen. And I have concern about profit and nonprofit. I have concern about how many times the residents in Falmouth are inconvenienced because we've made a decision here to allow 300 people to be on the bike path, and there's someone that uses the bike path every Saturday. I have concern when we're looking for a liquor license, and it's out at the Yvarstable Fairgrounds, and do they have police, and is that all kind of monitored and taken care of? So each time I go through these, I ask a lot of questions, because my number-one concern is thinking about the residents of Falmouth, the inconvenience, if we are very free on these permits, and is it creating an atmosphere in Falmouth that really isn't true to our nature? Now, where the other side of my, my problem is, is when it's a fundraiser, as this one is with the American Lung Association, well, it's very difficult for me to have a negative attitude about that. They have to, they need to do fundraising, and they want to use our town to do it. That's very difficult. But I think there's a lot of things that are happening in Falmouth that need to be addressed, and it seems as if it's always in that summary of actions. So now I've said everything I was gonna say to whoever was sitting here to listen to me and answer each one of those. So if that's worth putting it off for a week, fine, otherwise, I'll vote for them.
I think, it sounds like there's a larger discussion that you might want to have, and it's certainly something that the board can take up as an agenda item, is some sort of discussion or policy, or a discussion about a policy with respect to perhaps these fundraisers and the use of town public ways and such. And I think we've, we've sort of touched on it before, but never really pursued it in any serious manner, and maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe that would help alleviate some of your concerns.
Well, I-
But the other, the other alternative, of course, is that when we get this agenda in the packet on Thursday and Friday, if there are questions that you have, you'd certainly contact the town manager's office and see if they can answer those questions, or maybe they can relay to the applicants that there are members of the board who have questions or concerns, and we could schedule them as a regular agenda item, as opposed to in the summary.
Or at least make sure they have things gonna be here to answer the questions.
Statute, yeah.
I, I think, I really thought, if you were applying, that you were going to be here. I did, I did think that. That you've put, you, you know, you've requested our permission, and I would have thought you would have been here to-
I think some of these have been going on for years and years.
I think, I think you're absolutely right, because when I read 29 years, 32 years, and they've been doing it, I, and I would say that 29 years ago, we didn't have the bike path, and maybe we didn't have the beaches, and maybe we didn't have thousands and thousands of people coming. And I think that it is a different town in respect to how many people want to use the facilities and the beauty of this town. And I think we need to have a conversation.
And, and you're justified in questioning any one of these, and I follow up on the thing, there are some times when I want to ask some questions, I just call the office and make sure the applicant is there that evening to represent it, because it's a question I ask. But you've got a broader discussion, and I don't diminish it. We were talking about doing away with the summary of actions, if you remember.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And, and, you know, would have been done administratively, so-
Yes.
You know, when you bring up concerns like this, you kind of start second-thinking those types of discussions.
I was gonna say, I think we do need the broader discussion, and I think one thing that I have noticed this summer, and I've heard from other people, is that there were a lot, not, well, there were a lot of people here, for one thing, we know that. There were a lot of people here this summer, probably more so than previous summers, but there's also, it seems like there's a lot of events. And when we see these on a Thursday, preparation for Monday, we don't always remember what we have already approved last month, the month before, whatever. And I was gonna suggest that we have that broader discussion, and ask Diane to give us a calendar from this past year, say, from April through October, of all the events that have occurred just this year, every, every day, every week, so that we can look at it and just see overall what we've actually approved for this summer, and how, and maybe have, compare it to last year or the year before, because I think there's an increase in, in requests. Not that I'm saying I'm opposed to them, but I think we need to get a, a sense of how, how many events there are. And as Becky said, whether they're not-for-profits, or for-profits, or they're fundraising for nonprofit organizations, or for the Falmouth community, and how we are actually, how other people, how people are utilizing our resources for, for such events. It would just be informational, and then from the, from having the information, might set a course of direction for us, or help us set a quarter, course of direction. Just a suggestion.
Well, Ms. Moffett, you held-
Well, I mean, that basically was, is going to be my question. I just went through all of these and just had one question after the other concerning this. I really wanted to know what a craft beer festival is. I'm not real sure whether that's variety, or if that's-
Well, let's, let's go down the list, one at a time. Well, let's go down the list, one at a time. That's all right.
Oh, okay.
Item, item two, do you have any questions that we, that, maybe somebody on the board can answer the question?
Okay, on the bike, they are, they're biking for about, close to $3.75 miles. I was just curious about how they come across the Bourne Bridge, but I did read that they get off their bikes and they walk across, and then I watched the map all the way through Pocasset, and then as it comes right into town, so, I just, I just thought about all of those bikes and coming, I mean, it just seemed to me like it was pandemonium. Fuck.
Well, it's worth noting that in the packet here, we have recommendations from the police department, they have no problem with the request, and so they're fully prepared to manage the bike traffic, and-
Okay.
I don't see anything here, any negative comments from any of the offices of-
Oh, no, I read that, and there's no negatives, no.
All right, so how do we want to proceed with this?
Okay.
Move approval of the special event of the 29th Annual Autumn Escape Bike Trek with the American Lung Association on Friday, September 27th.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. And the next one, the Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride, and the sign variance for that as well. Any, is there any question here that we might be able to answer for you?
All right, let's see, on that one, is the Buzzards Bay Coalition is the one that is going from Old Dock Road to the Beach Road? All right, they've got 300 people, 40 vehicles. They, I mean, the signatures of the people are people that you know, and you know they're committed to this. They get their regulations about using the bike path, they're putting up a tent, I wondered where that was going to be. Chris at Harbor, okay, it's at the end of it?
Harp House.
Okay, and how much do they raise in doing this fundraising, in a cycling fundraising? How much money do they actually, right? Those are some of my questions.
Yeah, I guess that's a question that is less, not so much under our purview, if it's something you could certainly reach out to them personally and ask, but I don't think the fundraising dollar amount is something-
Is supposed to be anything we're concerned with?
Correct. And again, for the record, the police department reviewed it, they have no problem with the requests, the DPW reviewed it, they do not foresee any issues.
Okay, and, um, and I wanted to ask the question, what is awareness to the need to protect and preserve our Buzzards Bay watershed?
That's the Buzzards Bay Coalition?
That's what they do, that's their mission, to protect and preserve the waters of Buzzards Bay. They're a large organization.
Okay.
And we, we support them as a community and as a town. I think one of our town staff is a member of the Buzzards Bay Coalition, isn't she? She used to be, Maureen McGowan used to be a member of the Buzzards Bay Coalition, I think. I'm not sure, I thought so.
Well, I think it's interesting, it's also sent to Chairman Flynn.
Well, if you notice, they, they never get it right.
I know, but you know I'm going to say that.
All right, so we have the watershed ride, we have the special event permission and the sign variance. How do we want to proceed with these?
Move approval of the special event and the special sign variance, because all the signs are on private property.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on the motion?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm looking at 30 days. They're going to have the event on December 1st, they're going to leave the sign up until December 7th, I believe, and-
Wait, this is, this is the motion for the Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride?
Oh, my goodness, I'm way ahead of you.
And the Congregational Church.
Yeah, the Congregational Church has been continued, because they'll be coming back to us.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second for the Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride and the sign variance for that event. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, and then we come to, the last one that you held, Ms. Moffett, was the one-day liquor license for the Barnstable County Fairgrounds Craft Beer Festival, and I do believe we have someone here who might be able to answer your question.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, my name is Matthew Gray, I'm the owner of the Cape Cod Craft Brew Festival, we will be in our second year this year. Did you have a specific question?
Okay, let's see, what is craft beer?
Craft beer, the microbrews, so something that's, actually, Cape Cod beer is a perfect example. American-owned microbreweries that we focus on at this event, we'll have 60 of them participating, and it just gives people a chance to come out and sample a variety of craft beer, so the next time they go to a liquor store, they can make an informed decision.
I think Sam Adams does that all the time, though.
Yeah, they have, they do a good job of it.
They have a craft beer.
Yeah.
And you have 1,500 people you anticipate being-
It'll actually be less than that, probably around 1,200 to 1,300, and that includes the vendors as well.
Okay, and then it's your job to make sure that there's police protection and-
Police will be there, we'll have a tent on the grounds, it'll be under the fire marshal's jurisdiction, we'll have security hired, security for the day. The fairgrounds also has the Harvest Festival going on at the same time, and they have security for that, and police details for that as well.
I see you live in Newport?
That's correct.
Why did you choose Falmouth?
I was looking for a location on Cape Cod, I actually am a taxpayer in Orleans for a summer home, but this was, the fairgrounds seemed to be the best place to host a festival like this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have limits as to when people sample the beer? How do you control that?
We are, we pour one to two ounce pours in every sample cup, there is a time limit, it's a three-hour session, and we do offer a designated driver ticket as well for a nominal fee, as a way of helping people make sure that they get home.
And everything went smoothly last year?
Very well, yeah, and everything's going, planning is going accordingly for this year too.
Mr. Murphy?
The folks pouring the beverages, are they tip-strained?
Yes, all, everyone pouring is tip-certified.
So you have 60 tip-certified?
All the craft breweries provide their own staff, and this is what they do, like, every weekend-
Okay, okay.
At every craft beer festival around, so.
Okay. And typically in these licenses, we defer to the detail sergeant to decide whether you'll need a detail or not.
Yeah, we actually encourage detail officers.
Is that on the, on the license, maybe the, then the restrictions, the typically these, no, the police department, I don't have a police referral in my-
There's nothing on the license, the police department does have a recommendation, they say they have no problem with the request.
Just contact the detail sergeant, maybe they'd make that part of the motion.
Yeah, we always, we always hire detail officers at these events, I produce two in Rhode Island as well.
So again, make a motion to approve with the stipulation that everyone's tip-strained, and that you contact the detail sergeant to see whether or not you do.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item on the summary of actions that we have not yet addressed, Mr. Sussa, the DCR, item number 11.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, as you and members of the board are aware, this is not something we receive every day, but we're just being asked to announce at the selectmen's meeting that the Department of Conservation and Recreation is interested in exploring the acquisition of approximately nine acres in the town of Falmouth. In particular, I flagged this for the board, because the notification letter that the board has received, even though this is not directly related to announcing this interest, I guess that's already occurred by virtue of being on the agenda in my remarks I just made. However, in their cover letter, they do indicate that this property abuts the Wacoit Bay National Estuarine Research Reserve, and as the board has seen from the maps I've provided, it is at least 500 feet distant and separated by several neighborhoods from that same, from Webner. If it would be the board's desire, we could certainly raise that issue and apprise them. I guess the inference is that this would be added to an existing landholding of Webner. However, the map that I, the color map I shared with the board indicates this is surrounded by conservation-owned land and no state-owned land whatsoever. So it's curious in that regard, and I can't help but wonder if there is not some misinformation that's been presented to DCR that appears in that letter. Not an abutting property, they indicated would be used incorporated in the state parks, reservation, and forest system. So just want to share that info with the board.
Personally-
It is privately owned, by the way, Mr. Chairman, both parcels by a single individual.
I think, by the same individual?
Yes.
I think it would be worthwhile for the town manager's office to notify the DCR that this does not directly abut the Webner property. It could be that they have an interest in it, because it is technically part of the Wacoit Bay watershed. It does, the property is part of the Eel River West watershed, which flows into Eel River, Eel Pond, which is all part of the Wacoit Bay watershed, so they may have an interest in it because of that, but it is sort of curious as to why they think it might abut the existing property.
We're only being asked to announce it, I mean, we can announce it, but then say, let them know that perhaps some of their, they better check the property lines of what they're considering, but-
It's been announced.
It's been announced, that's what they plan to do.
The only other comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is that I think I shared that with the communication of the board, is, this is, of course, taxable property, and I shared with the board information on its current taxable value, so I wanted you to be aware of that as well. I'd be happy to bring that to the attention of the state authorities.
Thank you. All right, and that addresses the summary of actions, any individual, any reports from the individual members of the board?
Yeah, I was, I attended the Highfield Volunteer Month, and I thought it would be interesting for you to know that in the month of July, that 7,000 people visited Highfield in the month. Annie is very busy bringing people to Highfield, and over the course of the year, the volunteers put in 6,000 hours of volunteer work, which is like the equivalent of almost four full-time people, when you think about it. So the, it's really going very strong, I think, the programs are very well done, and in fact, well, we'll be there Saturday anyway for the, but you have to look at the Sally Mabor exhibit, she's the one that had the ferry houses about a month ago, that actually made the front page of the Cape Cod Times, which I thought was interesting. But she has another exhibit up now, it's, I can't even describe it to you, you really have to see it, it's incredible, they're, they're interesting pieces of art that she has, and they're, they're, they're all over the building, so you'll be happy to see those. I also attended the Maya annual retreat at the Seacrest last week, which is why I wasn't here for the meeting on August 26th, and Maya has come up with a couple of different apps that I think are going to be helpful to the town employees in terms of health, you know, maintaining their own health. And I wish I could remember the name of the app, but it also does, it's kind of in a contest, and you don't really, it's not a diet thing, you can use your points to do various things. Anyway, there'll be a demonstration here about it, but it's a way to engage people in not only trying to improve their, their whole lifestyle, but also to maybe win something in the process, or to compete, to compete with their friends. And Maya also engaged a company called Ability, and this is, this is part of the property casualty insurance, and say, for instance, recently in New Hampshire, and there was a large storm or flood event, and one of the town halls up there actually was just demolished in this flood. And what Disability does, they have a variety of services, but up to the point of, if you were to lose your town hall, and then you contact them, and they provide you, you just simply pay for the cost of bringing it there, is they brought in a whole mobile unit and set up a town hall in a mobile unit, so all the town employees could continue to work with the computers and with all their information. And, but they do various things, like if, if a public building were flooded in some way, people couldn't use it, that they would come in, they have local resources that they call upon, and bring those resources in, and you just pay for the delivery of whatever they are, not people, but equipment or whatever that might be. So it's kind of an interesting concept for an insurance company to be doing something like that. So those are, those are two of the highlights that I can recall from, from the meeting.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, you all may recall that the last time we met, we talked about the committee handbook and trying to sort of fast-track that. I was in communication earlier this week with the assistant town manager, and the town council is looking at putting together the section about removal of individuals for cause and reorganizing the documents, so that's going to be coming, it is in progress, so just to give you an update on that. If there are no other reports from the individual members of the board, do we have any questions about the town manager's report? Is there anything, Mr. Sussa, that you need to highlight?
Just one item, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a reminder about the Selectmen's Strategic Plan Retreat, as been referred to, this Saturday, September 14th, at Highfield Hall, and the retreat's planned to begin at 8:00 sharp, we look forward to working with the board on that this year as we did last. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Under correspondence, I would like to note, and I'm sure the town manager's office is aware of it, there's a considerable amount of information that's come our way in recent weeks about the state of Great Bay Road, so hopefully the town engineer's office will be looking into that.
We are indeed, yes.
You there?
I could just add, it just reminded me that I went out to White Pine Lane off Sandwich Road, and there is an issue out there, but I don't know that it's kind of late in the evening and talking about it, but I drove all around the neighborhood to find out, were they the only people that had that same issue? And it is because the town does a certain amount of paving up to a certain area, and then it's gravel, and then the town, you know, takes care of that point, but it's every street. It's not just White Pine, it's as I went up and down and just kept, it's the same idea on every one of the streets. So, yes, there's an issue out there, but it just needs to be, I think, you know, she brought it up and brought it to our attention, and sent us all a letter when her computer wasn't working, and, and so I thought I would go and take a look at it and see what was the problem.
One thing, sometimes when you get calls about the roads, in the office, there's a road directory in there, and what it does is, you, all you do, all you have to know is the name of the road, not the street list, this is the road directory, and it tells you whether or not the road is a, is a public way, if it was adopted by town meeting, and it says, it was adopted in an article so-and-so, in whatever year of town meeting, and any road that doesn't have that means that it's a private road.
I think it's not a private road.
Oh, they're not private, they're, they're public roads.
They're private roads?
If they're gravel, they can't be.
No, I looked up, White Pine is not a public way, it's not a public road.
All of those streets out there are not-
Well, White Pine was, and I looked it up in the directory, just to see, and, well, we'll show you, we'll show you where it is.
All right, well, if there's no other correspondence to discuss, that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Move, Chairman?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919 when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, 548-0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Internet services provided by Cape.com Incorporated. Established in 1994, Cape.com is the only locally-owned and operated internet service provider on Cape Cod. Our specialties include e-commerce applications and design, wide-area networking services, and high-speed DSL internet access throughout eastern Massachusetts. Cape.com continues to lead the way with cutting-edge applications, superior networking services, and quality customer support. For more information, visit us at www.cape.com, or call us at 539-9500.